All right. Let's move on to our 2:00 PM items. 6.11, Presentation of Overview of Lake County 2050 General Plan and Local Area Plans Updates. And we have a whole team coming up. Come on up and sit down at the chairs. Make yourselves comfortable.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mariaa Turner, Community Development Director, come to talk to you about my favorite We have recently launched the update for both the general plan and all eight local area plans. Thanks to board support, we were able to bring onboard a renowned planning firm to assist us with the preparation of these community vision documents. And we do have a few members of the Placework staff that are on our core team attending today via Zoom. General plans are updated every 20 years. Local area plans are similar planning documents in that they are community vision-driven plans that talk about what a community wants for itself, where it's going, where it wants to go for the next few years. Because we had such outdated plans, the board supported the decision to update these all at the same time. So this is a very ambitious project. We're all really excited. Oh, and just, you know, to add some more fun, we were able to secure funding through the administrative office, securing an APGP grant to throw in the Climate Adaptation Plan as well. And so because those are all community vision-driven, it works out just splendidly that Placeworks is working with us to assist on all of those at the same time. So we don't have multiple vendors holding multiple county visioning meetings. So this actually couldn't have worked out better. The core team on the county is myself, our principal planner, Michelle Iris, our community assistant community, what are you, deputy? Our deputy community development administrator, Shannon Walker Smith. And you'll notice next to her is our, another awesome support team. These are the wonderful women of AmeriCorps who are going to also assist us so that we can pretty much be everywhere in the county gathering input from anybody who walks by, who can outrun us. Additionally, at some of our future local area plan meetings, you'll see various members of community development staff that will be helping out as well. I am going to now hand it over to Placework staff to walk you through an overview of the process, as well as our community engagement plan, which will help us realize the goal of securing these documents as community vision-driven planning documents. I'll turn it over. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Director Turner, and thanks for your time, supervisors and chair. My name is Tanya Sundberg. I'm a principal with Placeworks. Really excited to be here today to present this overview. I also have with me Jacqueline Pottsman-Rohr as part of our team. We're going to be tag teaming on this presentation, so let me get this going. Okay, so just to start, this slide presents a broad overview of this project. We're calling it Lake County 2050. This includes a comprehensive update to the 2008 general plan, plus all eight of the county's local area plans. Those are listed here on this slide. It also includes environmental review of those updates. That's required by the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, and that's done through a preparation of an environmental impact report. And finally, as Director Turner mentioned, it includes this concurrent preparation of a climate adaptation plan, and that provides a county-wide framework to adapt to climate change. So we'll cover an overview of all those components as part of this presentation. So I want to start with some background information about these plans that we're updating, and I'll focus a little bit on some of the state legislative updates that we need to keep in mind. In a lot of cases, a big part of the update is to make sure that the plans comply with changes in state law that have happened since the previous general plan and local area plans were prepared. So starting with the general plan, this is a long-range plan. In this case, we're going to be looking out to the year 2050, and it guides the county's decisions on a pretty broad variety of topics that affect the unincorporated parts of the county. The general plan is often referred to as the constitution that guides land use and development in a jurisdiction. It's called a constitution because it provides an overarching framework for all of the more detailed regulations and plans that affect how development can happen. So typically, what a general plan does is it first lays out a community identified vision for the future, and then it presents goals, policies, and actions to support the jurisdiction in achieving that vision. So it's important to provide, it's important for the general plan to provide consistent direction, so everyone has some certainty about the future of the community. And because the general plan has, it covers such a wide variety of topics, it requires really careful thinking and also real effective community engagement and input, so that we can balance growth, conservation, and quality of life in a way that supports the community's vision. And then last, the general plan also serves a purpose of documenting baseline and environmental conditions, and that's really so that everyone has a shared understanding of what the starting point is for the plan. So there are eight topics that state law requires a general plan to address. Those are typically in the form of individual chapters or elements, but local agencies do have discretion to cover other topics to meet needs of the local community. And there's also not any real requirements about how you organize the topic. So these can be standalone topics or chapters, or they can be combined into broader chapters. In your current Lake County general plan, you cover the required topics from the state: land use, open space, circulation, housing, conservation, safety, and noise. You don't currently cover environmental justice. That's a new topic that I'll cover a little bit later in the presentation. Your current general plan also addresses some optional topics: public facilities and services, geothermal resources, and an aggregate resources management plan. And then it pulls out agricultural resources and water resources as standalone separate chapters. Those are more broadly required through the open space and conservation topics, but in your general plan, they're currently pulled out as individual chapters. Couple notes here, too, that the housing element is part of the general plan, but it needs to be updated on a more frequent schedule than the rest of the general plan. So we typically will do that through a separate process, and that's what's happening here, that your housing element will be updated separately. And similarly, the aggregate resources management plan will be updated separately from the Lake County 2050 process. And then just a final note here, that it's really important for the general plan to be internally consistent, and for other county plans to be consistent with the general plan, so that it can effectively function in this role as a constitution for the county, and so that community members have that certainty about these aspects of their future. So land use is one of the topics that receives the most attention in a general plan update, and part of that is because of this map called the Land Use Map, a big part of the general plan. It identifies what kind of land use can be developed on each parcel in the unincorporated county. And then it also provides some basic parameters for how that land use can be developed. So that might mean in residential areas, it tells how, you know, the maximum number of homes per acre that can be developed, or the intensity of a non-residential use, like, based on the ratio of square footage to lot size. So those are part of the general plan. And then that sets you up for your zoning map and zoning regulations, which provide a lot more detail on exactly how those land uses can be developed. So I will turn it over now to Jacqueline, who's going to talk about the health and safety element update.
Thanks, Tanya. So to start off, what is the safety element? As Tanya said, it is one of the mandatory elements of a general plan with a focus on natural and human-caused hazards in Lake County, with the overall goal of protecting the county, including residents, businesses, infrastructure, and the environment from natural disasters and other hazards. So these physical hazards can include flooding, severe weather, emergency evacuation, wildfires, and also hazards that may worsen due to climate change, such as extreme heat and drought. Next slide. So the health and safety element is just one part of Lake County's overall approach to protecting the community against hazards, and it integrates with several other county plans to do this. The health and safety element is a high-level, broad document that discusses the county's comprehensive public safety approach. There's also the local hazard mitigation plan, which is a more detailed, short-term plan that focuses on specific implementation actions. The emergency operations plan, which is the county's internal plan for response and recovery. And the community wildfire protection plan, which provides an evaluation of wildfire hazards and then strategies for reducing wildfire risk throughout the county. And this project also includes the development of a climate adaptation plan, which will focus on increasing the resilience of human-built and natural systems to climate change hazards. And the safety element will integrate information from each of these plans and tie into them as appropriate to help create a comprehensive public safety approach. And then the other benefits of updating this element are to ensure consistency with the other general plan elements and agency plans, comply with state regulations, which I'll go over in the next slide, and then improve eligibility for grant funding to implement resiliency and hazard mitigation projects. Next slide. So since the previous update to the general plan, several new laws have come into effect for the safety element. These updates to the government code increase requirements for flood and wildfire sections of the element to identify responsible agencies, ensure coordination among these agencies, as well as minimize the risk to new buildings and critical facilities. There's also a focus on climate change and adaptation through SB 379, requiring safety elements to prepare a vulnerability assessment that identifies risks to hazards, and then develop a comprehensive set of goals, policies, and implementation actions to build resilience in the community. SB 2140 allows for the incorporation of the local hazard mitigation plan, which makes the county potentially eligible for increased disaster relief funds. And then three of the new laws, SB 99, AV 747, and AV 1409, focus on evacuation, requiring the identification of evacuation routes and location, capacity, and safety, as well as evacuation-constrained areas. Next slide. The vulnerability assessment is the analysis that will be conducted for the health and safety element update. This assessment will evaluate how people and community assets, such as buildings, infrastructure, and economic systems, may be affected by climate change hazards, as well as the degree to which they're vulnerable. The vulnerability assessment will also assess the availability of existing policies, programs, resources, to help people prepare for, respond to, and recover from impacts. And the results of this analysis will be, will include a prioritized set of vulnerabilities that will then inform the resilience and adaptation policies of the health and safety element update and the strategies in the climate adaptation plan. And in Lake County, the expected local climate change impacts include increases in intense rainfall leading to flooding, more frequent extreme heat events, an increase in frequency and length of drought conditions, and then more frequent and intense regional wildfires. So with that, I'll hand it back over to Tanya to go over environmental justice.
Thanks, Jacqueline. So this is the last topic that we want to highlight. This is an entirely new topic that state law requires you to address in your general plan, based on a state law passed in 2016. So it's, again, it's not in your current general plan. Just for setting some groundwork here, just thinking about how we define environmental justice. You can see here how it's defined in state law. I think a lot of people have different opinions on what this definition should be, but I think about it simply as just the basic right of everybody to be able to live, work, go to school, play, and worship in a healthy and clean environment. But what this law recognizes and why we are looking at environmental justice in the general plan is that low-income communities, communities of color, and tribal communities have experienced a combination of historical discrimination and negligence. And today, these communities are often struggling with disproportionately polluted and unhealthy environments, as well as disproportionate social and economic disadvantages, like poverty or housing instability. So under this law, communities that are facing that combination of challenges are termed disadvantaged communities, and the focus of the general plan environmental justice element is to improve conditions in those communities. So the state law that led to this new requirement is called SB 1000. It identifies a specific list of environmental justice issues that need to be addressed in the environmental justice element, and the county doesn't have to be limited to these issues, but it needs to at least address these issues. So for any communities that are identified as disadvantaged in the county, this environmental justice element will need to identify policies and programs to reduce pollution exposure, provide adequate public facilities and services, promote access to food that's affordable and nutritionally adequate, provide safe and sanitary housing, and promote access to opportunities for physical activity. And also, when we think about making these changes, we know it can't be a top-down process. We need to emphasize equity and policymaking, and that requires us to involve all of the affected communities in the decisions that affect their lives. And then finally, based on this legislation, we also need to make choices that prioritize improvements in those disadvantaged communities that have historically faced the greatest impacts. Okay, so we're going to move on now to the local area plans. Local area plans are also long-range plans, but therefore a more localized area, so they provide policy and design guidance that's really attuned to the local area. So the local area plans operate under the umbrella of the general plan, so it's important that they're consistent with the general plan, and that they also complement the other local area plans. So as part of this role, they serve as a more precise supplement to the general plan for the local area. Finally, the local area plans also provide land use and zoning information, an important part of their function. So as part of this update under Lake County 2050, we do plan to reorganize the general plan and local area plans to streamline the content and avoid redundancy. So many of these required and optional general plan topics that we've talked about are best planned at a more localized scale, so we plan to cover those in the local area plans. That includes land use, circulation, open space conservation and recreation, environmental justice, and public facilities and services. And then the remaining topics will be addressed at the county-wide scale as part of countywide elements in the general plan. That includes health and safety, noise, geothermal resources, agricultural resources, water resources, housing, and the aggregate resources management plan. I'm going to turn it back over to Jacqueline to talk about the EIR.
So the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, is the state's primary environmental protection and disclosure law. For the general plan update, we'll be preparing an environmental impact report, or EIR, which will be an informational document for decision-making for the project. The EIR will disclose information about the effects of the project on the environment, identify mitigation measures to reduce significant impacts, and describe feasible alternatives to the proposed projects that are designed to reduce any environmental impacts identified. The EIR must be certified prior to project approval as well. And this process does provide two public comment periods, one during the scoping phase to tell us what to analyze, which occurred this past January and February of this year, and then the second will be during the public review phase of the draft EIR to comment on the environmental analysis itself. Next slide. So this project will also include a climate adaptation plan, which will be on a slightly different schedule and timeline than the general plan and EIR. The climate adaptation plan is part of the adaptation planning grant Lake County receives, and this plan will build off of the work conducted for the health and safety element through the climate vulnerability assessment, and also include additional community outreach and engagement to develop an adaptation plan and implementation framework for increasing resilience of residents, visitors, the built system, and offer resources to hazards that may worsen due to climate change. And with that, I'll hand it back over to Tanya to go over the schedule.
Thanks, Jacqueline. So this slide just shows broad picture, what we're looking at for Lake County 2050 overall. We are planning on a three-year process. We kicked off the project last fall. We've been doing background research and setting up for community engagement since then. We are, as Jacqueline just described, the climate adaptation plan, as she mentioned, that's on a separate, slightly different schedule. So that just kicked off. We're expecting that work to be complete in fall of 2025. For the countywide elements work, we expect that to move relatively quickly with draft elements anticipated in fall of this year. And then for the local area plans, we're initiating that right now, this spring, and we're, we'll be working on alternative approaches to policy and land use guidance in those plans through this fall. And then the work to prepare the full drafts of the local area plans will continue through spring of 2025, and at that point, we'll be able to begin the EIR evaluation, which will take us to publication of the draft EIR in spring of 2026. And then we anticipate public review and adoption concluding in fall of 2026. So I'm going to turn your attention now to a separate attachment in your staff report. I have a few slides to go over this community engagement plan. This was one of our initial tasks for Lake County 2050, and it's a plan that lays out how the general plan and local area plans update process will reach the entire community. So the plan starts by identifying the engagement objectives. As an overarching objective, the project aims to hear from a wide range of community members to shape these plans, but more specifically, the desired outcomes are to ensure that community members understand the project and why it's important, promote robust and diverse community participation that represents all perspectives, and builds public trust in the process and support for the general plan and local area plans. We know that historically, certain groups have been underrepresented in planning-related decisions, so the plan lays out how we can make intentional efforts to reach and include these groups, and that includes low-income households, Native American tribes, non-English speakers, older residents, younger residents, and renters. And then the plan also lays out the activities, the main activities, that we'll undertake to engage the community. That includes a general plan advisory committee, or GPAC, that you helped to recently establish that consists of stakeholders from the community that have a different range of perspectives that'll guide the process, and they'll also be acting as community ambassadors. We also are planning to hold community-focused workshops for the local area plan updates process. We'll have three rounds of those workshops, and each round will have one meeting in each of the local area plan, planning areas. That may be a part of the established advisory body for that planning area, which is the case for our first round of community workshops. We just recently scheduled those for April. They will be part of the advisory body meeting, and we just listed those on our website. So we're, right now, as we speak, initiating outreach to spread the word about those upcoming workshops. And then we will be holding some stakeholder-focused groups on individual topics, and those topics are still to be determined. And last, I just want to highlight here our project website. This is live and ready to use. It's lakecounty2050.org. Please help spread the word and direct your friends and family to this website. They can learn about the project. There's a survey available right now that will help us to learn more about some of the key issues for the update. So really encourage folks to check that out. So just real quick on terms of next steps, this is, of course, a three-year process, so there's a lot ahead of us, but in the near term, I think the main thing we are looking for is folks to help spread the word about the project and our upcoming community workshop series in April. So please check out the website, check out the survey, come to one of these meetings, and encourage folks to do that, because we want to hear from as many folks as we can. So this concludes our presentation. I thank you for your time, and welcome any questions.
If we could highlight one last item, I briefly mentioned our AmeriCorps team, a group of awesome local women that will be boosting our presence in the community. So I'd like our deputy community development administrator to bring them up, introduce them, and just kind of let you know a number of the events that we plan on attending.
Good afternoon, board. Thank you, Mariaa. So I have been working on the community engagement piece of this project, and we have partnered with NCO's AmeriCorps CIRC team to help us out as we try to gather as much input on this initial survey as we can. These lovely ladies, I'm going to allow them to introduce themselves in just a moment, will be helping us out at that first round of local area plan meetings. We're going to be facilitating some small group breakouts, and they'll assist with that. And then they're planning to attend a variety of events through April and early May to collect input on that survey from those folks that are not attending community meetings with an effort to really target those target audiences that were discussed in the PowerPoint presentation. Those events will include a variety of neighbor fests that are being planned by NCO, as well as a senior event, and I'll let them talk about any additional events. Once we have wrapped up the initial survey, which that's going to conclude in May, as we go through the remainder of the process, the different stakeholder groups and the different topics that we need to address, we may develop more community-focused questions, and if, when we get to that point, the AmeriCorps members will continue to help us canvas the community for answers to those questions. So it really is our intention to draw in as much community input as we can. We have also, with the help of admin and auditor's office, so thank you to them, we have gotten approval to purchase some incentive items, because we know that incentivizing survey responses from underrepresented groups is a best practice, and we want to make sure that we're doing our best effort in that regard. And without further ado, I will have the AmeriCorps members introduce themselves. Maybe just say how long you've lived in Lake County and why you're interested in being involved in this project.
I'm Amanda Jo. I've lived in Lake County. I moved here in third grade, so, I don't know, a while ago. I love it here. I moved here from Daly City, and it's nice to be in a community that actually cares about each other, that there's nothing, this is home. And so it's nice to be a part of something that's making home better.
Hi, I'm Dawn. I've been here for about 12 years now. I moved from the Bay Area, and it's nice, it's definitely different up here. I like it because it's a little lower pace. I was used to the hustle-bustle and all the traffic, so it's nice to not have so much traffic, but I'm just happy to be here and just willing to, hopefully, we can get all this situated and get everything ready for all the plans. We have a lot going on in April. Tammy's not here, so, but she'll be here next time, but it should be fun doing all this for you guys.
I'm Pamela Coleman. I'm born and raised here in Lake County, and I'm excited for all the events we have coming up in April and to be more a part of the community and help make it better.
Thank you, ladies, so much. We're very appreciative for the partnership with NCO. Thank you.
We would also like to extend our appreciation to our technical side of our team, Sam Houston, Thomas DeWalt, with PEG TV, and the assistance of Chair Supervisor in working out the, all the different technical sides. As a result of these ongoing conversations, we realized that there are a number of local area plan meetings that have sketchy and somewhat unreliable internet access. Because of that, we'd love it if, as we're getting the word out, and as you're assisting us in getting the word out for these local meetings, if you would encourage strongly onsite participation. We really don't want to lose anybody's input. Everybody has a voice here, and so onsite participation is our most reliable way of having your voice heard during those meetings. Or feel free at any time to send us an email with your comments. That would be at lakecounty2050@lakecountyca.gov, or you can go on the website as well. LakeCounty2050.org? Is it org? Yes, yes. And we welcome any questions, comments that you might have.
Thank you so much for your participation and the explanation of how all of this will progress. Thank you to AmeriCorps and the partnership with NCO to provide some extra capacity to be able to deal with all of these large projects. Very thankful that we're moving forward with this. It's been a long time coming, so excited to hear that it's not just been approved, that there's, we're ready. Any comments or questions from board members? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. I wonder if, I'm looking specifically at slides... Yeah, thank you. I wonder if, I'm looking specifically at slides four and 13. So on slide four, we talk about what the general required topics are for the general plan. Land use would be one of them. On 13, I notice land use is parsed out as a local area plan topic, but I don't see a general land use policy that would be addressed countywide. So I know this may filter up somehow, but can you explain how the required general plan elements that are not named in slide 13 as a countywide element that may be addressed within the local area plans? I guess I'm trying to find out how we get consistency among the required general plan elements when they're parsed off into these local area plans, where by definition, consistency is something we may not achieve. We want, we want to drill down. So it's just a, how do general plans in general live? What are the required elements? And how did we mix and match these various topics in the countywide elements identified and in the local area plan topics?
Thank you. I appreciate that question. So because our local area plans were so outdated, and we were going to update them simultaneously with the general plan, and actually, local area plans are considered sort of subdocuments of the overall general plan, we decided to put the more robust information in the local area plans so that we could make sure we're really capturing the community's vision for the future. The housing element, or the land use element of the general plan, like a number of the other required elements, could be found either in the general plan or in our local area plans. They just have to be covered in our, in our planning documents. And so we've, we've kind of relied on the flexibility that the state does allow for us to, to put more of the focus of the future planning within our local area plans. But it is the goal to have these be synchronous, synchronized plans. So they should not be inconsistent with each other. And I think that moving the land use element over to the local area plans will help keep that consistent as well. And Placeworks can jump in if I left anything out.
Looks like you did well. As far as the PEG TV thing, there aren't going to be some new locations. Those locations are definitely where the unknowns are, hence the letting people know, make sure that you are attending in person just in case. There has been some on and off broadband capacity in some of the other locations that we know, but at least it's a location that we know and will be able to diagnose and deal with that. And so hopefully, we'll, we'll do the best that we can. Those videos will be posted on our platforms that PEG TV has, including our channel, but we'll also be providing the videos back to the county. So the county can post them whenever they feel that it's needed to be posted. Thank you for that relationship and looking forward to see how that works out.
And one more highlight, this morning, we did secure the services of Gilbert Wrangle for onsite Spanish translation. So we're real excited to team up with the equalingo, lingual.
You guys move fast. That was only brought up yesterday.
We're not messing around. We can overda, adapt and overcome, but all the details we can get nailed down earlier better for us.
Awesome. Supervisor, say.
Just one thing in the countywide elements is Supervisor Green was talking about, just to make sure we have a cultural resources. I know it's never been added to any of the plans in the past, but definitely a conversation I think that needs to be had throughout our conversations right now. Because as you know, most of our tribal nations are not actually sitting on our tribal lands. The ancestral lands were taken from us. We were removed. Most of the construction and other stuff done in all counties, especially in our county, is on our ancestral land. So cultural resources, I think, is something that's missing in there. I just, as I was reading the resources, I thought I'd mention it right now.
That will be included in the environmental analysis. But I also want to take this moment to highlight the value of tribal input as we go through this process. I mean, I guess I don't need to tell you guys, Lake County is unique, I think, in its assets of, of the tribal history and the, the resources that we do have here. And as we proceed, we want to make sure that we have input from all of our community members. That includes people who are affiliated or live on sovereign ground as well. And so our planning commissioner from District Three made a wonderful recommendation at, when we did this similar presentation then, that is just saying that sometimes tribal members are uncomfortable going, traveling to community meetings. So perhaps we should make the opportunities, or take advantage of any opportunity, to go and meet with their tribal council and gather input in an, in an environment that is comfortable, which I appreciate that Supervisor Crandall is already assisting on that way. And additionally, we've reached out to the tribal EPAs, and I think we're going to be added to their April agenda. So we'll get to meet with the different tribal environmental leadership at their group meeting. So we are open to and welcoming all opportunities. And so if, please, if you think of another opportunity that you think would be valuable, let us know.
Okay.
Thank you for the question. Vice Chair Crandall?
I was just going to add that with the PEG TV, it'll be posted on YouTube like we, like mentioned. How much time, just, I'm just trying to, how much time will folks have if like they missed the meeting, but they're able to watch the PEG TV, and they want to make a comment? They'll have a way to go from there, like, if that makes sense?
Absolutely. I don't know the, the normal turnaround time, but as soon as those videos become available, we will post them in a number of locations on the Lake County 2050 site. Also, I think we're going to get, I'm not sure if we're going to get placed on the agenda site. Like, we do have the, the G-PAC meetings are posted there. But the videos should be available. And it's not like we're going to, you know, cut off input the day after the meeting. So anybody who wants to catch up on a meeting that they missed and send in input is most welcome to do so.
And what, the other discussion we had earlier to, when we were talking about seating a position for the G-PAC, we talked about those other advisory committees, per se. And that, I know for, for that situation, I think that's where I know if there's a tribe in each district, and we do go that route, I know that appointing somebody with the experience of the cultural resources would be a big benefit as well. So I'm just adding that input.
Wonderful. And whatever the supervisors can do to encourage applications focused in that area would be most appreciated.
Absolutely. Supervisor Pyska?
Well, we did have a conversation earlier about the area plan committees. And so I don't know if you want to just take a moment for the people that weren't part of that conversation?
Well, it's a decision that is yet to be made by the board.
But it's a proposal that you'll be bringing to us.
Indeed. It is tentatively scheduled for the next Board of Supervisors meeting for the board to consider establishing eight local area plan advisory committees, the purpose of which, as will be described and put before you next week, is to really drill down on the community-specific, what I think of nuts and bolts, like where the community growth boundary is going to go, that sort of a thing. And additionally, to allow opportunities for the community to be heard on a micro, on a, on an area plan level in order to secure as much input and deliberation as possible.
Right. So I'm looking forward to that. As someone who has their district pretty much equally divided into three area plans, that this is going to be a lot of work. And I think it's going to also take a while to figure out how to make those appointments with the area plan. So it might be, when do you think you want, I mean, I know this isn't a conversation for today, but, you know, if we, if we do visit that at our next board meeting, it would be helpful to maybe have time to discuss this with the MACs, too.
Yes. Yes. And I will be happy to discuss that.
Okay, great.
At the next board meeting.
And I believe that would be finalized prior to the beginning, because April 8th, April 10th is the first one?
So hypothetically, should the board decide to establish these eight groups, we would then rely on the administrative office, team up with them to get the press release out to solicit applications. So the timeline would actually be establishing what I call laypacs after our first local area plan meeting. But we, we do have time in between those, although our, our timeline is a very ambitious one, and there's work going on all the time for it. We will then look to weave in these local area plan advisory committee meetings so that they will help inform the, the ongoing G-PAC meetings as well.
Okay. I just see the opportunity during the, going to all the MACs and all the other meetings to be able to say, here, here's what we've just created. We're going to be looking for applications. It's a good advertisement platform at that point, since you're already meeting with the community right there and then. My, my last thought, in order to ensure this is based on what Vice Chair Crandall was mentioning, is maybe on the agendas, having a link to where the videos will be uploaded, whether it's the Lake 2050 website or not. That way, it's an easy access to get those things. And let me know if you need any other, maybe PEG stuff. I would prefer that it go to a Lake County thing that we advertise, since it's our agenda. But happy to add anything else where we would be uploading it to as well.
Awesome. Thank you. I've been hogging the whole time. Do you have anything to add? No?
And I do have one last question for you. Just curiosity. Right now, and there's two plans where the cities are kind of embedded, are the cities going to be carved out? Because I know there's not been confusion, but there's been statements that the cities are part of such and such plan, when obviously, the county doesn't get to make a plan for the city jurisdictions. Just kind of curious if it's, you'll see a carve out on this new map for those individual area plans.
Thank you. We have taken advantage of a number of opportunities to behave regionally, and that is targeted around our climate adaptation areas, both in the climate adaptation plan as well as the health and safety plan, climate vulnerability analysis, and the countywide evacuation plan. In those, it was appropriate, as we discussed with the city managers, appropriate to just go regionally and, and just treat it as Lake County as a whole. However, since the city of Lakeport and the city of Clear Lake are standalone jurisdictions with their own general plans and their own, I don't think they have area plans, but their general plans, they are not included in the community visioning that we are doing for our planning areas as well as our general plan.
And the same thing would be said as well about tribal land, too.
Indeed.
Where it's embedded within the area plans, but again, no jurisdiction over those areas from the county.
We have had some discussion regarding any value of our climate plan for tribal nations, which are also responsible for their own climate plans. But so far, we haven't really found that, that nexus, because, you know, the tribes respond to federal, not California state plans like we do. So, but we're always looking for these opportunities, though.
So I have a stupid question to ask. I know we're looking at the EIR and SEQA. Is there any benefit by looking at certain areas where I feel like we're either relying, A, more on federal funding, we've been getting a lot of funding through congressional support, but also because of the status of our budget at the state level, that maybe, that, that will push us to get more federal support or seek more federal support, where certain areas might get reviewed in a NEPA perspective, so that again, it allows us to maybe go through certain processes faster in the future as we develop? You don't have to answer that today. It's just a random thought.
That's an interesting question. I will be happy to take it to the team for further discussion. I know that we, we don't have any plan to do a NEPA analysis of, of a state project or a state-oriented project.
Okay.
At this time.
Thank you very much. Any further, Supervisor Green?
Yeah, this may be for the later discussion on the lay PCs, I think you got them. But before we go too far down that road, for the eight plan areas we have called out, for example, Lakeport area plan, we discussed last week, it includes part of Kelseyville. I was just looking at it. It doesn't include parts of Scotts Valley that are currently included in the Upper Lake plan. So, and we're about to, depending on what happens when this comes back, have not just robust input from our municipal advisory councils, but it sounds like we may be spinning up some advisory councils that follow a different geography. So I don't know how helpful, I, I know it's a baseline. We're kind of stuck with it. But the current mapping of our area plans is not contiguous in any way with our town hall regions. And I'm trying, I'm just struggling how to resolve that, because I'm bending over backwards to get my guys from Scotts Valley here for a special meeting to provide input on Lakeport area plan. Didn't even occur to me until I looked at the maps now. Maybe I need to cart them up to Upper Lake for a meeting, too. So how, how are you going to balance, because I'm not going to, how are you going to be able to balance the stated geography of our baseline area plans with the knowledge that our communities of interest and our municipal advisory councils in particular, don't represent the geography of those area plans, with the exception of the one we just created?
Well, we do keep in mind that the municipal area councils, such as Scotts Valley, have a larger purpose than just the general plan. So they do comment on a variety of land use elements, but they also comment, or they also are advisory bodies for a whole other slew of things that doesn't have anything to do with this. So we, we, we decided to use our municipal area councils as the kickoff locations. One, because you already have a focused body that continually talks about community issues, and these members are, are also getting messages out to the greater community. So it was a great starting point. But to answer your question about boundaries, during our first local area plan meetings coming in April, the question of, do these boundaries still reflect our communities, is actually one that we're going to cover. There may be some adjustments done so that we, going forward, reflect the communities as they are currently.
And I would suggest that the MACs are more of a community-based, while area plans are more geographically based in, of what's appropriate to talk about all at the same time. So I think it confuses things because we're utilizing the MACs to try to get access to the community to get feedback on, but I think they're two separate things, in my opinion. And I think that, that goes right in line with what you just stated.
Absolutely. Area plans are more thematic, kind of similar communities. Like you have the Riviera's, which has all four HOAs in that large collection of subdivisions. And Kelseyville, which is more agrarian or, or commercial, and so it focuses on Kelseyville, Big Valley, and, and Finley. So, yeah, we're definitely open to public input, and we have been approached by a few members of the public already wanting to discuss possibly adjusting the boundaries. And so that will be one of the areas that we talk about.
All right. Thank you so much. Let's go ahead and open it up for the public. I don't think I've done that yet. Please raise your hand if you're on Zoom or come to the microphone in the chamber. And we have Betsy Khan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, everybody else. I have unfortunately, a lengthy list of concerns about this. And many of those concerns that I have been talking to our other committee members about have to do with the outreach and education for the public. I find the survey to be of very big disappointment. And I'll certainly provide my comments in detail to, to Maria and the crew. But I just do want to explain the, the necessity to have actual data for making evaluations of prioritizing policies and goals in the general plan, needs to be based on actual, real data. And that we have many, many sources for that real data. The surveys are almost a random sampling of whoever might feel like being involved in, you know, and maybe they heard about it, maybe they didn't. But real data is actually very valuable. The, there's some ambiguity in the survey itself, so I'd like to have an opportunity to work with the, with the CDD and make this element of the content analysis far more specific. And we, we need to talk about those area maps, et cetera. In the regard to the Lakeport area plan, the city and Scotts Valley Water Conservation District have a, a very important relationship because the groundwater basin in Scotts Valley supplies roughly half of the potable water to the city itself. But the area plan doesn't include the city. So we need to have an intergovernmental relationship there to have a comprehensive, you know, reality-based area plan that comes out that includes everything. So those are just some suggestions. The, the background report, I think, is very important to us to, to lead to the analysis and prioritization of what we come up with for, especially for our safety element. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, and please do submit the, the rest of your comments via email. Any other hands in the room or in Zoom? And seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. This was a presentation only. This was a presentation only to make sure everyone, ourselves included, are alerted as to the process and when things are happening. Appreciate everything that you've put together to get this beast moving, and it's exciting.
Thank you.
And I think that, thank you very much for your presentation.